I'm following the meeting of the Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and like to welcome everybody here tonight. I see County Commissioner Edwards here, welcome. The next item on our agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councils want to make changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am the sponsor of 11A, and my major reason for proposing that NOI is to actually encourage specific project or program-based citizen engagement, and I have been read it now for the 100th time, I realize that it's not completely baked. And so therefore, I move to postpone Agenda Item 11A under New Business, which pertains to an ordinance proposing various amendments to the Municipal Code Regarding Boards, Commissions, and Committees. I propose to postpone it to the council meeting of July 10th, 2018.
Sergeant, Councilwoman Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. I second the motion as stated.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item A is postponed. Next item on the agenda is Council Comments. First on the list is Councilwoman Smith.
My comment, sir.
Next is Councilwoman Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind everyone that the District One Territorial Charter Workday is on Saturday, June 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Hidden Park, between 38th Street and 41st Streets. The main entrance is on 38th Streets. And the Community Development Department is the one that's helping to do this along with Gary Staley and his crew of youth.
Yes.
Yes.
JPO.
The JPO youth are helping, and so we hope to see folks from District One or any district that would like to participate to come out. If you are interested, they suggest that you also call the Community Development Department or stop by at (534) 6349 is the phone number, 1203 North Hudson in the annex. The city annex is where they're located, on the second floor. You can also go online and enter your volunteer preferences if you would like to participate in another charter date, the Territorial Charter Workday. So they want to know, the Community Development Department wants to know what folks in the area and in other areas that visit that park, what do they want to see in terms of improvements? I mean, we have ideas about sprucing up and weeding and pruning and doing all that, but what kinds of improvements do you all want in that park? Because it is quite hidden, and I know that Councilwoman Smith had mentioned that she had been there, and I've seen the stairs to nowhere, but we would just like to see what it is else that you all would like to do there. So there's mobile parking within the park. Street parking is available on 38th Street. I've been assured that a Prius can drive up into the park, so they're going to have the road graded to make sure that that can happen. It says gloves are recommended, and feel free to bring hand tools and pruning tools, and light refreshments will be served. I'm pretty sure water's involved in that, making sure you're well hydrated, but I'm not sure what else will be there. I don't know if our town manager has any more information than what I have about that. Definitely water.
Yeah, it's water, battery.
Things like that, stacks. Okay, great. So I hope to see you all there on Saturday, June 9th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in Hidden Park. And if you have any questions, please contact the Community Development Department. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to remind the public that early voting is going on right now for state and county races. You can vote at the county clerk's office until June 2nd, which is a Saturday, and then actual election day is June 5th, so please exercise your rights to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Edison.
No comment.
Any of the councils have any additional comments? Councilor, Amy Smith.
Yes, I talked to someone else, might have mentioned we have the Blues Festival coming on this weekend. Big day, and I know that it kicks off Friday with glass competition, so you can go watch various folks with goggles and torches making glass sculptures. As well, there'll be some street printing and other festivities, so another big weekend in Silver City.
Any other additional comments? I'd like to thank in advance all those people that's going to be volunteering to help with the Blues Fest. It takes a lot of energy, a lot of people power to make this thing work, so thanks to everyone who's going to be participating. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the May 15, 2018 regular council meeting. Do you hear a motion? Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 15th, 2018.
Okay, very second. Councilwoman Edison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I second the motion as stated.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public input. I see that six people have signed up, and I'd like to just remind you in advance that we'd like you to keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. And first on our list is Sherri Clements. When you come up with you turn the microphone on and speak right into it so we can all hear you.
I brought some notes, otherwise I tend to get chain of consciousness here, so. My name is Sherri Clements, and I live in the Silver Heights neighborhood. Three and a half years ago, we had a series of robberies, and we just had another one recently. The reason I'm here is twofold. First, to talk a little bit about crime and the drug problems in our neighborhood specifically, but I know it's all over town. And second is the fact that we are, I know you're going to be getting a new chief, and I think the two things tie together right now. I have been there about 21 years, and I don't think I've ever been there where there hasn't been a drug house within four blocks. We've dealt with the police numerous times, we had a community meeting with them, and we get the same answers, it takes a long time, it's, you know, it's not easy, you should put bars on your windows, you should get alarms, which is basically saying you're giving up. The other one is, you know, why don't you have a community watch group? I did a lot of research on community watch groups. There's two problems. One, you have to be very diligent, and you have to have a lot of people in the neighborhood willing to do things like patrol. Our neighborhood has an awful lot of older, single women who don't feel comfortable doing that necessarily. Other people like me work, and I can't be up all night patrolling. But my second concern, my main concern with that is, why on earth would we want to get the drug dealer out of our neighborhood and just move him into somebody else's neighborhood in town? That's not doing any good. So that's not an answer for me. You have a new chief that you're going to be selecting. I don't quite know what the selection process is, but one of the things I wanted to go over was some of the things I really hope you will consider in getting a new chief. I want them to be someone who is going to aggressively go after drug crime. I want them to be someone who will make that a priority. I would like them to be willing to ask for outside help. I understand in a small town, you don't have a large police force, and sometimes it is hard because you don't have enough people to go after something. But I want them to be open to saying, hey, maybe we can call the state police, maybe we can call the DEA, whatever it takes to get something taken care of. Because we've had, I've at least had one house in our neighborhood four years, another house for at least six years, and I think that should be enough time to handle it. If not, maybe they need to look to outside help, and I hope they'd be willing to do that. The other thing I would like them to do is to be willing to look at what other communities have done that have been successful. I've done some research myself online, and some small towns have had great success reducing their drug crime and drug houses. And so I would like people, someone who's willing to go outside the box a little bit. And finally, I really, really would like it, and I don't know if this sets up through you or who this works, but I would like to have a drug task force that has members of the community on it, hopefully a member of the police force locally, maybe a sheriff, whoever we can get. And I don't want it to be small, and I would like it to be medium-sized to large, so you have a lot of input and people who, I would be super happy to be on something like that, people who are actively interested in doing what it takes to really research this, communicate, have more communication between the community and the police by that. So that would be my final recommendation. And the main thing I really wanted to say was, I really hope that you'd be open to doing that. I don't know what the steps are, and if you just make that decision or not, but I wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Jackie Cusick.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing us. My name is Jackie Cusick. I live in Silver Heights, directly across from one of the houses that has just been referred to. I too have had a robbery. I reported it to the police, and shortly after the event, the offender was apprehended. My property was delivered to the drug house across the street, and his activity there was corroborated by a witness. The offender was arrested and then released. I understand that in a small town, we have limited resources, but this connection to the drug houses and our robberies is pretty obvious. Offenders are captured and released, and as a matter of practice, but there is no justice given to the victims of the crime. We never hear about where our property went, whether there was a decision made with regard to justice. We just hear nothing, and nothing changes. The business continues across the street. I have seen families torn apart over all of this behavior. I watch it from my front door. Young people to middle-aged adults, people with girlfriends, parents with childrens, spouses, are in serious trouble and are paying a high price, and yet it goes on and on and on. The residents of Silver Heights are also paying a high price. We are a solid neighborhood. We take care of our families, our homes, our property. We fear for children who have to walk to school. We worry about security when we have to go to work, run errands, go on vacation, or go volunteer somewhere. Homes go up for sale in our neighborhood, but buyers say they don't want to buy a house where there are drug houses in the neighborhood. It really affects the economic balance of our community. It is time for Silver Heights to take a stand, and indeed, I think, all of Silver City. We need this council, and we need our police force and our justice officers to support us in this. We have resources, we've learned about resources, and I'm sure that they can be made available to us. Even though we're a small town, we still matter, and why not make this town an example of what it can be, not what it is a victim to? I would like to see neighborhoods resort to the security and justice that we all deserve. We need a real will to make an end to this kind of business as usual. Please stand with us. Please help us find solutions and make this a real difference for our neighborhoods and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is Al Gamboa.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name's Al Gamboa, as you already heard, and simply here to pretty much confirm that the invitation has made it up to your exalted heights of an invitation to our next Society Board meeting for the museum. And if it's not logistically possible, we can certainly work with that whenever it would be. We're simply trying to verify our status within the organization so we can all get back to work and start making money for the operations of the biggest landmark that we certainly have here. Is there any questions that, or like I said, I'm open to suggestions. Let me know when that possibility might be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is Thursday, May 24th, but I do understand there's some conflicts there. I think the big manager's already, did you confirm with the council or not yet?
It isn't a city board meeting or anything, so, it's not a city board meeting or anything, so I am going to meet with Mr. Gamboa.
All right, yeah, we're 501(c) separate corporation, an integral part of the museum, just like the town board itself.
Thank you. Ron Fair.
Hi, my name's Ron Fair, Mr. Mayor and the council. Came to address the ordinance 1268, and I know you've just tabled it, but I'm hoping that we had a few specific questions about the language, and so, you know, that's something we're hoping to bring into focus. Looking over the 1268, it looks to be a laudable process to try and simplify and uniformize, you know, most of the boards and things. The first, reducing our board from to the current five is fine with us, you know, I think that it makes it easier to have a quorum when you go from five to four, five to three. There is a language, there was one little specific thing where the word county was excised. We have two county members, two members who live in the county on our board, and so they were a little worried, but that meant that they would have to, they would no longer be legitimate in the board. So there was some concern about the shrinking of the province to just the town. And so, one other thing is that section 30-21, where, you know, there was some specific language in the earlier version that has now been replaced with standardized language. Rather than have to refight the battles of those specific situations, where is a board going to adopt the approach that we're going to continue doing the way we do our business, but it's not going to require an explicit okay? And so, I just wanted to let people know that, you know, there is, you know, we're a little worried about losing some of the things we spent the last few years building to try and come up with a, shall we say, a more active role of the gut of the board itself insofar as advice. And so, you know, we've had some struggles, but in the last two, three years, we've had some support. I want to thank Cynthia for helping work together with the last director to establish the committee system set up. And so just because the committee language disappeared, we're hoping to be able to still use that procedure, because that's the best way we can get to get our advice into the director currently. So, you know, that, I just hope you take that in consideration when you do, you know, review the 1268 language. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Jane Forrester Thompson.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Jane Forrester Thompson, and I'm here to represent the Silver City Museum Society Board, and I must say rather directly that there's a crisis between the board and the director, and we have asked for a meeting with the town manager and Carmen Vendeland, the director of the museum, and also we asked for the town board to be there because of some confusion about who has what responsibilities for on what board, and we just simply wanted a clarification of those duties and responsibilities. But we have not been able to work well with the director. We have tried, and she has not worked with us, and I understand that there's been some scurrilous emails going around about this board. I must say that we have not tried to interfere in the running of the museum at all, but since we raised about 40% of the funds for the museum and pay for the salaries of several of the employees, we expect a little support from the administrative assistant and the director of, the coordinator of the volunteers. And all we ask is a little paperwork assistance in writing, getting out letters for membership, for sponsorship, and thank you letters. And the director has said to her staff, they should not do any of that. Well, we are not prepared to do that ourselves. We are volunteers. We signed up for the board thinking it would be a positive experience, working with other people who care about the museum. We are on that board because we are proud of Silver City, and we love the museum, and we want it to continue to do its work. And its mission stated in the bylaws is that it should be focusing on southwest New Mexico culture and history, and that has not been the case for a while. At any rate, half of our board has resigned because of this, and when I say we are in crisis, that is not an exaggeration. We have tried to work with the director. We have asked the town manager to meet with us, and that has not happened, that has been ignored for two months. And we have, as Al Gamboa said, who is the president of the board, we are having a meeting Thursday, this Thursday, this week, at 3:00 at the museum, and we would like some of you to show up, especially the town manager and the director, and we would like a working session where people can work out, figure out what the responsibilities and duties are of everyone, and we ask, we are inviting you too as well. We want some direction, and we want some clarification. And if the rest of the board resigns, then this 501(c)(3) would fold, and we would have to spend the money, which by law is required to spend it on another 501(c)(3), it would not go to the museum, and it is important that we start working together. We have tried to do that, and we have been blindsided. So we want people to take this situation seriously. We on the board have good intentions, and we want this museum to survive and thrive, and we ask your support and help. Thank you.
Thank you. The sixth person to sign up is just signal me that she doesn't want to have any public input, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, Reports. Mr. Brown, do you have any reports?
No reports.
Okay. Next item is New Business. Councilwoman Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that Chief does because of, yes, because of, yes, he does want to make report.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
When did this, I didn't hear about that until just now.
The current chief told me earlier, and I completely forgot.
Okay.
He called today.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We're aware of the issues in that area. We understand that they're ongoing. I understand the frustration of these individuals. I also understand the frustration of the justice system. Sometimes we get frustrated with it as well. We're trying to be proactive to resolve these issues long-term. I did meet with certain officers this morning. I gathered updated information for that type of specific area. I'm still going to currently explore more options to resolve this issue, but I do have already something in place for this. I can't go into specifics because there's some senses of information, but I wanted, what I wanted to do was to encourage citizens to please come forward with any information because that helps us greatly, helps us do our job. We need to reach out more to them, and I understand that, but I do want to encourage them to come forward. As far as one of the victims of a burglary, and that's one of the things that we're going to be pushing forward to is follow, following up with the victims, so that way they're not, they're not left in the dark. So again, I do have something in place. We have impacted that area in the past. I've personally been there for that area. It's not forgotten. We understand it's a problem, but there's something, again, I do have something in place.
Does the council have any questions? Councilor Edison.
Thank you very much. Captain Portillo, I don't know if I should call you Captain Portillo or Chief Portillo or whatever right now, but I think that one of the things that I've requested several years ago, when, it's actually, I can't even remember, three or four years ago when all the crime was happening, is that there be contact from our department to the victims of those crimes, and that they, you know, I know that it's a two-way street, but we also have to be more communicative about what's going on with the victims', you know, property, as Ms. Cusick had said, and as I know that another individual, I tried to make sure that she would know what was going on with her property. And I think anything that we can do to follow up is going to be very important in community policing and in making sure that our public is trusting and knows that we support them and that we're trying to do whatever we can. So I hope that, it sounds like you're going to take this on, and I really hope that this comes to some sort of fruition where the, as our force changes, you know, as what's going on with, you know, with Chief Reynolds retiring and you moving into the interim chief position, that we can really take some of these really great ideas that were mentioned earlier tonight and see if there's some way, I mean, I know that our officers and I know that our department works with other departments, but I think that looking at what other small towns have done, where it's a combined community effort that includes the members of the community along with our members of our law enforcement, to see if we can come back and just say no, just say we're done. We don't want you here, we don't want you in our communities, whether it's in District One, whether it's in District Four, or District Three, or District Two, because these women all came out and they all live in District One, which is where I'm from, but I know this is happening everywhere. And, you know, because people talk about it, and they talk about, you know, and I know that you cannot explain what processes are ongoing, but to know that we are visible, that we are, that, you know, we are listening and that we are going to move on, and I think that any sort of a plan to say that, like I said, that we're done, we're over, we don't want you in here, we don't want drugs in our community, we don't want drug homes, I mean, we are small, we have certain things that we can't do, but at the same time, we can make a statement as a community that, no more. Because of what it's doing to our citizens and what it's doing to the people that are actually involved in it and the families that are involved in it, that don't really have anywhere to turn in some respects. So thank you for coming and saying and speaking to that, and I think that there'll be more requests for what are we doing? As a general sense, what are, what are we doing as a community with our officers? But thank you.
Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not acting chief, you know. Yeah, I know. Could you please give the appropriate contact information here in public? You ask people to contact your office if they have information or observations? Are you talking about calling dispatch, or is there another number that you want them to call?
The main number is non-emergency, of course, if it's a non-emergency, central dispatch, 388-840, and of course, 911 if it is an emergency. We can go from there.
Okay.
I do want to add a little bit to Cap, well, he's still Captain Portillo. At the end of the week, he'll be acting chief for us, to clear that up first. But the town is part of the Drug Task Force, which is made up of all the police agencies in southwest New Mexico, which include the state police, the Border Patrol, the surrounding counties and DEA, the municipalities. They're all, they're all working together, using federal funds to work cooperatively to lend detectives to other agencies so that we have undercover people. They've been working together for a long time. But there's another side to this. But there's another side to this, to this picture is that, for instance, one lady said that they arrested somebody and he was out the next day. That wasn't the police's fault. That's the court. Last year, the chief of police presented me with one person that was arrested 120 times in one year and served no time. So this goes, we've, there's, we need to completely work with the police, but we also need to work with the legal system as well. Because if we don't get it for, I mean, if they're not made accountable for what they've done, what's the use? We can't just sit and blame the police all the time. There's two sides here. And I just want to make that clear because we've got to work on everybody.
Do you have a question? I'd just like to make a few comments. For me, this goes back about a year and a half ago when people, I guess I've been contacted by six people specifically that were burglarized. And they were frustrated because, you know, the police came and they did a report and that was the last that they heard. In one case, they tried to find out where their property was and they, because they had been, they had found it, but they didn't know exactly where it had been stored or something. And so I met with Mr. Brown and Chief Reynolds and I thought we had developed a system, a formal system whereby the investigating officer would talk to the victim and find out how often they wanted the police to actually contact them and let them know what the status of their case was. And I don't know if that's happening or not, but I'm sure want to see it happen.
I saw the memo where the chief directed the detectives to do that.
But is it a formal process or is it just a memo that not, someone reads and may forget about? And when I say formal, I mean, I think it should be part of a report, that this victim was contacted and this is what they said and this is what we did.
Yeah, there's a process that I'll explain it. First, there was a directive given out. They do have case management where they're supposed to be logging down times every time you contact anybody, including the victim. So that's something that I need to go back and follow up with and see exactly if I have that information for you. But I do recall that happening.
Yeah, I'm sure you realize that it's a pretty traumatic experience for someone to have someone break in their house and steal their belongings and not to know what's happening is, is just, creates an atmosphere for a bad rap for the police, you know what I mean? And I know you're working hard to solve the case, but we've got to make sure that the victim knows what's going on.
So Captain will follow up in the next, can you bring a report next week?
Yeah, I'm on the patrol side, but I'll follow up with the investigation side and try to see exactly the mid-level supervisor, how he's been keeping track of it and I could update you with that information.
Thank you, Captain. One more thing, Counselor Bederson?
Just really quick, I know that we're part of a overall multi-county, you know, federal task force and I, I would just ask that it be examined about doing one that doesn't include some community members for our town, and then through the chief feedback. I mean, just this whole notion that small communities have done that, they have taken and they've made, you know, they've done a variety of different things. It's where, one of those things where the chief would do it, but that it would be something where we have some community input. It's not that they're going to, you know, the things that the other task force does, but I think that hearing from community members or even having, you know, forums where the, it's something where they can talk about the issues in their area and, and do it, you know, find out what it is because it, they can do. Because what it does is it gives them a sense that, that we are, it's telling that we are listening, that they are hearing it, that they have a little bit more familiarity. It's not the same thing as the overall large task force. This is one specifically for the town that would, it's not going to tell the chief what to do, it's to work together to make our communities safer. Okay? So I just want to, I know that you have questions about what I'm talking about, but it's not directing them what to do. It's working together, citizens and police in tandem and just making it so that this is visible, that our community is saying no. It's not just our wonderful drug task force, it's the fact that as a group, we are saying, we say no to drugs. Do you see what I mean? It's a community and, yeah, community policing effort that includes citizens. So this is a suggestion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Mr. Brown. The first item on the agenda on the new business will be 11b, approval slash disapproval of endorsement of Counselor Bederson's candidacy for the position of president-elect of the New Mexico Municipal League. Counselor Bederson?
Thank you, Mayor. Time to submit letters for candidacy is coming around the corner and I'm currently the vice president of the New Mexico Municipal League. And I'm honored to say that I've been endorsed by the Town and Service of the Council each time I've sought an elected position within the league. If I am fortunate to be so endorsed and then also elected to the position of president-elect, that will be the last time I will come for this information because it's a direct line into becoming president of the New Mexico Municipal League. I, throughout my term as vice president treasurer and as a board director, I serve and continue to serve Silver City and our other communities throughout New Mexico as their representative, ensuring that these communities, including Silver City, have a voice on the board and in other committees. And I think sometimes the league gets a little bit tired of me saying, you know, I know I represent 160 municipalities, but wait a minute, Silver City's a little different. And I always make sure that we talk about what is so important and different. And thanks to doing things like that, that they understand that we are a territorial charterer, that that holds a very special place, that it is a significant thing to be a territorial charter municipality. But it's more than that, it's making sure that they hear our voice in amongst all the other small communities in the area. So with that, I ask for the town council's endorsement to seek the office of president-elect and then, which then falls into president of the New Mexico Municipal League.
Okay. That's a motion, right?
I don't make my motion on that. No, someone else should make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the endorsement of Counselor Bederson's candidacy for the position of president-elect of the New Mexico Municipal League.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Counselor Ray?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'd just say that when we go up to participate in the various activities of the municipal league, I feel proud when I see Counselor Bederson up there as one of the leaders in the state and she's from our town council. And so thank you for doing that. I know it takes a lot of work and a lot of time and a lot of travel, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the council. I appreciate your service.
Next is new business, item 11c, approval slash disapproval, a request for proposal number seventeen slash eighteen dash four p, general engineering support. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, periodically we go out for general engineering services and these are the engineers that we can just go up to when a project comes up. For instance, like the welcome to Silver City signs that we can just go straight to without having to go out to, to bid every time a project comes up. And that, and these general engineering services can only be used for state and local-funded projects, not federal. We did that award a few months back, but this is for state and local money. We received six RFPs proposals and its staff's recommendation to award the general engineering services to Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., of 3,400 Highway 180 East, Suite A, Silver City, New Mexico. To make that clear, it's actually formally Engineers, Inc., and just formally Occam Engineering. And so the review committee chose to recommend only one engineer for all of this district.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Bederson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve proposal number seventeen slash eighteen dash four p, general engineering support on staff recommendation to award the bid as follows to Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated, 3,400 Highway 180 East, Suite A, Silver City, New Mexico, eight eight zero six one.
Is there a second? Counselor Ray?
I'll second now.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item, 11d, approval slash disapproval of preliminary budget for fiscal year 2018 dash 2019. Mr. Brown?
We have to submit our preliminary budget to DFA by May 31st and then our final budget by July 31st. And at that time, we will do our final quarterly report and our final budget adjustment. But at this time, we're just, we are only required to do the preliminary budget. As I presented to you earlier, the, we're basically holding a flat budget with everything. Gross receipts taxes are estimated to be approximately a little over 9.4 million dollars total. And that, to get at 9.4 million dollars, we are going to have to pass our first hold-harmless increment for beginning July, I mean, January 1st of the next year. We'll get three, three months worth of those revenues that will amount to about $98,000, which will be close to what we're going to lose this next year in hold-harmless for the next six percent that we're going to, is going to be phased out. You know, I did an estimate, a comparison of what we've lost so far in hold-harmless between this current year and 2014, the last year that we got our full hold-harmless. The difference to date is about $455,000 that we're losing annually. Next year, it's going to add another approximate $110,000. The only change is compared to what I presented to you at the last council meeting is, like I said, in lodgers tax, I put more money into professional services. We put $50,000 for those $5,000 allocations that we're working on getting out, hopefully by next week. We're working very hard to get this marketing firm onboard. I allocated a large sum of money to get that because that's going to be used by all of the tourist events as well as anybody that we're willing to allow them to work with to promote tourism in our community. The only other change is on the water sewer front. As appendix A, which you're required to approve the rates for the next year, I changed the out-of-town sewer access, it's called the access rate. Basic, basic, yeah. The out-of-town base fee has, I decreased it down to six, sixty-three, down from thirteen twenty-six for out-of-town residents. And the reason for that is because we've added 164 out-of-town sewer customers with base, base rates plus usage fees. And so I don't want, I don't, we really don't need to increase our revenue and I felt it was only fair to take the burden off, or we were placing the burden, the out-of-town sewer users. So that's the only change I've made other than from what I proposed to you earlier. And with that, do you have questions?
Counselor Bederson?
So I have a couple. I just, so I think that it's important that folks understand that the in-town and out-of-town base fee and per thousand, or the per thousand gallon for the in-town and then the usage fee are the same now, correct?
Yes, for in-town and out-of-town.
Okay. For the sewer only.
Sewer only, right.
It's not effective for water.
It's not effective for water yet.
And then, could you just mention, I know that you talked about, so this next year in, next year in 2019, we lose another $110,000 in the calendar year 2019.
An additional, yes.
Yes. But isn't it true that in 2020, it goes up to seven percent rather than a six percent loss?
Yes.
And I think that the community needs to understand that while there'll be less money to take the seven percent from, it's cumulative and so ultimately we'll be losing even more in 2020.
Yes. Yes, but we don't, I don't need to make that up yet.
Right. But I just want them to know down the, down the pipe that that's coming.
Yeah. Yes, you know, as many municipalities and counties have imposed all three increments already.
Right.
I mean, they don't need them because they haven't phased out the, they hold harmless yet. My plan is to only impose the increments as it's needed. That's it. I don't want to charge the community any more than what's necessary to keep services where they're at. Unless the community asks for additional services, then we'll, we'll look at different avenues to affect that.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown? Okay, do I hear a motion? Counselor Herman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2018 to 2019.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Ray, a second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Counselor Kano?
I'm in the book.
Has your finger on the button?
Yeah, I have, I have the second book.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Last item is appointment to the cemetery board. The town has received one application for the cemetery board. Linda Nuez, who has applied to continue her service, the vice chair of the board and also the public works director, has recommended that she be reappointed. And if there's no objections, I'd like to reappoint her.
No objections.
She is so reappointed. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Herman Smith?
I move to adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Be seconded.
I'll second it.
There we go.
Seconded by Counselor Ray or Kano, who did it? Counselor Ray? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.